This is our regular meeting for the month of December and it is great to have all these students, athletes, and their parents here, and community support here. So thank you to those who are here today, from SGA, and my student athletes, and your coaches, those who may be joining us online. Looking forward to tonight. So at this time, I'm going to call for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
For most kind and gracious heaven, we just thank you for the state, and thank you for your mercy, and thank you for your love. And I thank you most of all for your son Jesus, and God for our sins. We just thank you for this opportunity that you've given us to serve in this capacity. And we just pray that you give this wisdom and serve as we come to this room, which is Christ's.
Thank you.
I am blessed with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so Cherokee County's Board of Education's mission is for every student graduating from high school to be globally competitive for work, post-secondary education, and prepared for life in the 21st century. Alright, next item on the agenda. You have the agenda before you, or any additions or corrections that need to be made to the agenda. Okay, here it now, the agenda stands. You also have before you the meeting minutes from last month, as well as a club session minutes, or any corrections or additions that need to be made to those. Alright, here it now, that stands. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Mr. Chaplin, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
There is no.
Great, moving on down the line. Alright, that brings us to student presentations. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for the Student Government Association of Andrews High School. If you will come and tell us who that SGA, like is you in your school, I'd love to hear from you.
Hit accept on the board. There you go.
So we are Andrews High School Student Government Association, and we're going to just share a little about what we've been doing recently. So, I'm Caleb Sewell, Vice President of the Student Government Association.
I'm Caleb Odon, your Vice Secretary.
I'm Madison Queen, I'm a student body representative.
I'm Kyle Lovingdon, I'm a student body representative.
So, we want to talk a little bit about our mission. We focus on two core areas, building positive school culture and sort of serving the community. We like to listen to the voices of our students, as well as the voices of our community, to ensure that our school is a place of education and learning. So we believe student leadership initiates positive change not only in our school, but in the community as well. And as you'll see in the presentation, our work extends far beyond just within the school.
So when Hurricane means devastated western Fort Carroll, as Andrews students really set up, SGA coordinated a comprehensive lead drive for affected families. Student staff and community members donated essential supplies. This project showed our commitment to helping neighbors in crisis. We learned that even high school students can make a real difference throughout disasters.
And I would also like to add, at the end of this whole relief drive, we had accumulated about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in supplies. So, some of our ongoing service projects, this year and last year, we had a coat drive, and we intend to do that a week here after. So essentially, the coat drive is to meet a need in the community. We have a large homeless population within our community, and we wanted to ensure that that homeless population would stay warm via coats. I think at the end of the hard drive, we ended up with about a hundred and seven coats and about six hundred dollars in donations from various community members, churches, etc. So, in the spring, we intend on having a food drive, and essentially how we get the students involved with these drives are our house competitions. So essentially, we encourage competitions, so we can have incentives towards students to get involved with these drives.
Alright, our student voice in action. Our SGA actively listens to students' concerns and suggestions. We meet regularly with administration to advocate positive changes. Recent student input led to improvements in the year tutoring and study spaces. We serve as the bridge between student body and school leadership. Every student's voice matters, and we assure that.
So, recently, we met with Representative Gillespie, who's our NC House Representative for District 120. So essentially, why we wanted to meet with him, so we could get insight on the legislative process and how that affects our education system, and what we could do as servants to our school and our community to further engage students, further engage the community. And this experience sort of inspired us to think just beyond our school level, and sort of how we can get the community involved within the school, how the school can become involved within the community, to sort of now understand our potential to create change everywhere in Andrews, North Carolina.
Our most recent initiative focused on kindness and gratitude. Each day featured a different theme, promoting positive interactions. Students and teachers reported on their thankful board, and we created a video compilation shared with the entire community. This is a link strengthened bond between all members of our school.
Our system competition needs service. Okay, the eight chess houses are designed to reflect our local culture, community history, and names of other cultural and cultural markets. The names are intended to pay homage to our appallizing culture and heritage.
You talked about, you said you listened to student voices and bring their ideas to school leadership. Tell me a little bit about what that looks like. You have a suggestion box, which I think probably you have representatives in.
We do have suggestion boxes at school, and also the way our student government is structured, we like to allow anyone within the school to sort of voice their ideas, whether it be within our meetings to us, and so we can bring it up. Pleasure, because really our goal is just to represent the student body as a whole.
Very good presentation.
Your houses, Valley Hall, Storm Press, Iron Call, Wildridge, are they grade-specific? Are they, write that, tell me how that is.
So actually, it was towards the beginning of this semester, we had a large house store in there. With that, we just took a randomized wheel, and put names in there, and that's how we selected.
So you have a collection of grades within each of these houses. I like that. Okay. Are you anything else you want to share with us? Have we put challenges on? Great, y'all, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask the SGA from Murphy High School if you'll come and talk with us about all the opportunities in your school place.
Yeah, I'm just asking you to stay, right?
Yes. Would you like me to do it for you from back here? Would that be easier?
I think I can get to work, but it messes up.
We still have Daryl left, I'm sure.
I just want to say, thank you all for giving this opportunity to come speak to y'all today. My name is Carter Crowell. I would like to ask student body president this year.
I'm Anzi Roper, and I am your junior class president.
May I have a word with my senior class?
I want to say thank you to most of the rest of our SGA coming out to support us tonight. Alright, get started. Our mission at Murphy High School is to empower student voices, help students grow as leaders, and work together with staff and administration to make the high school a better person. We believe when students are involved, when they feel supported, heard, and encouraged to lead, the rest will become stronger, more connected, more successful. But I can talk about that kind of stuff all day. That mission really comes to life through the many ways our students get involved. From SGA events, like our hat for shootout fundraiser, to interact clubs, high teacher fundraiser, shout-outs, or our entire staff, we'd be in good sports around that. Our community-focused events, like our tourist recast drives, and our Rosa Club fundraising, they were in competition this year. Our students are consistently stepping up, pursuing interest, and being respectful, responsible, and resourceful students. We would also like to highlight a few major events this year, that it's not just about our club step, it's about our student body as a whole, step, and getting involved. First, is the hats for gaming event, which has been working to, where students raised over three hundred dollars for agents and children who had deceased in their after some other funding got taken away. Our varsity cheerleaders helped the WNC Strikers raise money at a football game, and our reliable team partner, the Haynesville volleyball, raised over two thousand dollars in support of Super Johnson's fighting experience.
SGA and student voices, I have been a part of SGA since my freshman year, and I believe that it is such an honor to be elected into the student government. We value our students' voices and opinions. We are in the process of implementing new ways for them to communicate with us and have an input on the things that we do. Since COVID limited student voices, we have been working on ways to introduce student involvement, such as a suggestion box, where they can put in their own suggestions that are on paper, but we are also in the process of creating a Google form to help digitalize this process. A lot of people are on their iPads nowadays, more than they're willing to write on a piece of paper.
Something else we're very proud of as our faculty, is that we're able to do the difference, from ranging from foods to construction to marketing. Each of these portions involves critical thinking and teamwork, and it will help us to envision better things in future afterlife. We are also able to be doing, we'll be no less in a community college, which not only allows us to graduate, but also deserves it. We also, I'm pretty sure, are the only school that have in-person AP courses, which AP US has, AP US history, we can do science and sports. But none of this would be possible if it wasn't for our amazing teachers and staff, who would be with us, and we would very grateful for all of our excellent opportunities.
I myself am a thirty-sport athlete, and I believe that sports at Murphy High School have always had a tradition of excellence. Our boys soccer team won conference and made it to the third round of state playoffs. Our volleyball team had a great season and made it to the second rounds of state playoffs. Our cross-country team represented Murphy well in regionals, and our football team won conference and is currently pushing deep into playoffs, being in the fifth round. We are very proud of our athletic success, and we are committed to carrying the same mindset in the classroom.
Students, thanks to Murphy High School, for their progress, or if you'd like to have a hat for shootout fundraisers, you can get some microwave for our cafeteria. We also are willing to start a community project, as we have a hard time with people actually listening to morning announcements.
Everybody's happy to sleep in the morning, so this is a big way to get some more information out about certain things.
We're also kind of breaking some ideas for fundraisers, or something for the workshop, or people with that.
I just wanted to say a huge thank you to our amazing teachers and administration for making our school the place we want to be, giving us the opportunity to learn, and none of this would be possible without them. And thank you. Y'all have any questions for us?
So your student-led podcast, I'm very interested in that, what?
So, we used to have like WOG, so that was a huge thing, and I think a podcast would be easier production for all of us, everybody's busy in the holidays. And we just think it would be a good way to spread college information, scholarships up out, morning announcements, fundraising events that are going on, and just interviewing students and teachers. I mean, getting interesting things for people to actually want to hear.
When would you want to launch that to the?
I hope to get it very soon, get some equipment settled with the other, and hopefully get started very soon.
Well, that's great. I think it will reach a lot of students that way, well.
That's got to do with you, too, aren't you?
Yeah, it is. I remember those WOG days, and I love those broadcasts that will come out on Fridays and see all the different things. I appreciate that. Yeah, I think remember that. One of the things that you mentioned was with Hayden, and your fundraiser for that, and that's an organization that is very near and dear to my heart, and I serve on that board. So I appreciate you helping get those out.
What I noticed about that fundraiser is it was just a class, so Julie uses marketing to casually help the fundraiser for that. So it was just like getting the whole student body involved, instead of just clubs and SGA.
Right, right. Again, who knows? When I heard that, I'm like, oh, this is great. You know, Ms. Myers, Courtney Myers, she had been telling me about that, and I was like.
I want to say that was like the most successful hack that a school ever had.
Yes, I was looking at that. Oh, great. This is wonderful. So, you know, I appreciate that. That was led by Vadas Hughes and her class. And then you were talking about potentially a fundraiser for the homeless shelter.
So, that will be something coming up pretty soon, because I'm in contact with representatives, and I mean, we have a large cross-country market as well, and we need coats and decrees and everything, so we hope to send some donations over there.
Yes, yes, and then I might encourage you to, there are some community partners out there who I would think would just love for, if we will, to make that happen. And if you get that, please let us know, because I would like for that to be, you know, some kind of broadcast on our webpage. I'm sure it will be on Murphy's webpage as well. So, I appreciate it. Any fellow members? Questions, thoughts, comments?
I would want to thank you again for your presentation, and again, just presenting yourself in a very professional manner.
Thank you for y'all, thank you for y'all who listened to it, so I mean, given the time we're talking about.
Wow, thank you for coming.
Hold on, I'll say something. So last month, we had Hollis Dam and Early College here, and they kind of took out pretty quick afterward, so I had to go outside and talk to them. For all the kids that are here, and not just the student government, I've got two kids in college seniors, right? And every day that I talk to them, my daughter went back to just for an oral presentation, right? She went all the way back for one oral presentation. So that's one of the biggest things I've heard from their college experience. This is for everybody from their college, next year or the year after. That's going to be one of the biggest things, to stand up in front of people. So kudos. Honestly, Hollis Dam and Early College did an amazing job last month, and so did you guys this month.
Yes.
Just a fact, I was the student body president in nineteen ninety-one in Andrews, and there is no way that I can stand there and do what you guys did thirty-seven years ago. It's like, just to stand in front of all these people and give out a presentation. So congratulations, great job. And for everybody else that's a kid, a student here, do this stuff. The more you put yourself out there, the more comfortable you become, you get into groups. Because your freshman year of college, to your senior year of college, this is what you're going to do. I hear it every week from both of my kids, I've got an oral presentation next week, I've got this, I've got that, and it's always that. So if you can't speak in front of anybody now, you better start practicing, and these guys got it down. Congratulations.
Yes.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Now we're going to transition to all the different athletic teams that are here that are represented tonight. So I'm going to start, and if I have skipped you by some reason, please stop me, but I want to start with cross-country. So I'm going to start with Andrews High School, cross-country. Coach, if you could get up and tell us about your team and their feats this cross-country season, and cross-country coach from Andrews High School, if you could come join him, so that we can hear about all your accomplishments.
Coach Andrews. So this is our very large cross-country team. We're missing one, one member. So, these boys are four years in a row conference champions, and including this year. We've got, out of the eight that we have on the team this year, we had five who are freshmen. So, future cross-country is looking pretty good for Andrews. Lord willing, everyone stays healthy. They were, they won sectionals this year, and we were runner-up at the state championship. I'm not going to brag about, you know, all their individual accolades, because, you know, we could be here for a while. But I just want to say that the most notable characteristic of our team is that all eight members will tell you that they understand and believe wholeheartedly that their relationship with God is their primary mission. These young men are beginning to understand the importance of holding each other accountable in this shared pursuit of this mission, and they are not ashamed to share this identity with their classmates and fellow athletes. I'm very proud of them, and blessed to be a part of this team.
So much, and I appreciate those words, because, you know, I mean, it's been a long time since I've been here, but it is, I do remember, if you're so sharing sometimes, how hard it is to stand firm in your convictions. So I very much appreciate that. Y'all keep on trucking on. If you have only five freshmen that you'll have coming back for the next few years for this, that's great. Is it five? Did I hear that?
Four.
Okay, alright. Four, five, four, me now. So thank you for coming, and congratulations on your accomplishments this season, and I'm going to go ahead to the other team.
So I'm Coach Creighton, Coach Josh, most of the girls. I've been coaching out of Tri County since my oldest daughter started running there nine years ago. So, so I don't know how many of you have followed running in our area, but the western region has always been extremely difficult. We've had state champion after state champion after state champion come out here, all the way back to what Pipes in the nineties was doing with Murphy for something crazy, eight out of ten years or something. Here recently, Swain County's kind of been dominant, Cherokee's been really good, Andrews Middle School, like, killed it all the way through middle school. Hollis Dam, I mean, we've also had strong running in the west forever. And this year, we had the opportunity for both Andrews and Tri County for the classification, reclassification statewide, and we opened up some opportunities, because instead of competing against teams that have five hundred, six hundred students in their high school, we're actually competing against teams that, I mean, they're still a big team. We were looking at some numbers recently, where I think it was, out of the twelve girl teams that were at state this year, something like seven or eight of them had over three hundred students in their high schools, which still is, you know, some of them are three times the size of us at Tri County, and also Andrews too. So, I mean, to keep that in perspective, like, if you take a five hundred student body school and go compete against somebody with fifteen hundred, it's extremely hard. Well, that ratio doesn't change what these guys are doing at Andrews, what the HD teams or HD teams are doing with their small numbers. What these girls did with Tri County this year is really pretty amazing. I might not, Mr. Forster put me on the spot. I walked in five minutes before this meeting started, and he's like, okay, you've got to talk. I'm just kind of shooting from the hip here, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Forster, but in the last few years at our sports banquet, I think across the board, we've been averaging right around fifty percent of our student body competes in athletics. Somewhere forty-five to fifty percent. We'll have fifty to sixty kids a year. Almost everybody up here does multiple sports, you know, before cross-country was even done, we're starting to do swim, and a lot of these kids are swimming, so they're postponing the start of their swim season while they're competing state. So first and foremost, I just want to really congratulate everybody in this county, the size of schools that we have, for the quality of athletics, Murphy, not college Murphy for five years, same deal there. You know, we would take the small little community that we have, and we would take our students, and we'd go compete against anybody, and oftentimes win. And like Coach Andrews said, I can't wait to see what their boys do over the next two or three years, because they truly do have a powerhouse building up there. So, back to our team here, I just wanted to introduce these girls. Fran Creighton is my daughter, and has ran for me for four years, and actually, well, longer than that, but officially for four years. Catherine Gonzalez just started running for us last spring, and this is her first cross-country season. Kathryn Gonzalez just started running for us last spring and this is her first cross country season. Jasmine Tran ran for me a couple of years ago and kind of took a little hiatus and then she came back this year, thankfully. Brienne Jaime Ramirez has done pretty much every sport we have at Tri County. Emma Watson has been running for me for a couple of years and Genevieve Galbert was a first-time runner. So one of the things I was proud of this year at the state meet was we had the state champion in Fern who brought home the title to our county for the first time in thirty years for girls. Boys, we had a champion from Andrews a few years ago. I think there's only, if I'm not mistaken, there's only been three cross-country champions in Cherokee County history. And Fern was one of them, so I was really proud of that. But just as much as being proud of that, I was proud of Emma and Genevieve who, they came in last and next to last. But their time drops over the course of the season were huge. Genevieve had never run a cross, cross-country race, she'd never run an I O K, she'd never, never really competed in anything. And she just contacted me over the summer, said she wanted to give it a shot. We always push that at Tri County, it's like, it doesn't matter literally if you're the state champ or you're a beginner that's never done anything, you can set these personal goals to work toward. And that's what high school athletics to me was all about. I mean, you're going to have a few here and there that get to go on and do great things and they might get to play, you know, in college. They might even get to play after college every now and then. But the vast majority of high school students who compete in athletics, they just go into the business world. They go get a degree and they go to work. But all of those skills and all of those setting goals and working hard, running through the hard days and the good days and, and being, you know, successful, that carries over in the life so much. And, and it's not the success really, it's the kids that, that just challenge themselves, do something they've never done and they go and do it. So, you know, it's pretty easy to be proud of the, the state champion, but I'm just as proud of every single one of these girls for what they brought to our team. I knew in the classification, reclassification that we had an opportunity to compete at a decent level. I never dreamed we'd be second at state, but I knew that we could at least compete and our goal was to try to make it to state. At the beginning of the year, two of our top three runners from years past were unable to run with us. One of them has some health concerns and hadn't been able to run for a couple of seasons. We were hoping to get her back and weren't able to. And then our next top runner had some family commitments that didn't allow her to run for us this year. So all of a sudden, these hopes and dreams of like, oh, we're going to be able to do something this year, started kind of like teetering. And we just hit the bushes, started, you know, asking kids to come out, hey, you've never done it, try it, let's see what happens. Oh, we've got one other runner, Sophia Smith is, is not up here. And Sophia was key to our success. She came out a third of the way into the season and is just a natural runner and just took off and started doing great things. So all of a sudden, the girls started believing in themselves. They started believing in crazy stuff I was telling them about. Because I'm a, I'm a mile split nerd, I go in there and look at all the numbers and I'm seeing what everybody's doing. And I'm like, hey, you have a chance, you have a chance. You know, we can go to regionals, we can do well at regionals, we can go to state. And finally, I think the free regional race probably, these girls had some success. They almost beat Thomas Jefferson, who's always a powerhouse in the state. And I think just getting close and realizing, hey, they only beat us by a few places, like, we actually can do this. From that point on, the commitment, the commitment they brought, practice every day and just work and the effort they put in and just really, they started seeing the benefits and just kept going and going and going. And we went to state and somehow came away with second place. They also are some of our top student academically. So that's pretty consistent too across the schools when you go in. Because the same, that same work ethic that's going to bring you success in sports and in life is going to bring you success in the classroom too. So we really pushed that. I don't think we've ever had an issue with any of our student athletes as far as academically being eligible, academically struggling because the way they work on the cross-country course and the workouts and practices, they do it in the classroom too. And for all of us coaches, it's, that's, that's really what, what it's about, is being a student athlete and doing both. And this group of girls right here have done an amazing job at that throughout their high school careers. Unfortunately, we're not a team of all freshmen, so we're going to have to do some serious rebuilding over the next couple of years. But hopefully, you know, hopefully success kind of is contagious and we can get a couple of those other girls out there that we know can run. That hadn't really given it a shot yet, come out and try it. But this group has just really made me love coaching. They've pushed me and, you know, it's been a pretty awesome year, so I'm very proud of them.
Well, thank you for coming and I've enjoyed seeing different coaches, seeing the different things, seeing where you play. And one thing for coming up here tonight, congratulations on your success. I'm not a runner, so I'm in awe.
You're letting it start.
I have a feeling you can probably help motivate me, so, you know, who knows, who knows? But thank you again for coming, congratulations on your season. Do I, I don't see anybody from Hollis Dam, but I have a lot of Hollis Dam here. I know we had Oscar Page, who literally won, I think he plays first in everything over the entire season and then maybe ended up eighth or ninth in the state. So I want to congratulate that team as well again. You know, Coach, we have to nail on the head, we're a small county.
Yeah, I think Oscar was actually third.
Third?
I believe so.
Okay, okay, third. We are a small county on the furthest end of the state that you can be on, limited resources. And here we are, I'm looking at a room full of productive students who have, who have accomplished major feats in, in the last few months. And I'm just going to be proud of her. I, I, there's a lot of things that work against us and a lot of times that's all we ever hear about. And you all are a product of what this school system has been able to accomplish, so kudos to you. Now, I want to move on to soccer from Murphy High School. Coach, Coach Novy, you will come up here, you will have your team come up here and say, and tell us, tell us where you ended up and, and the season and then, yeah, just give us your name and do that.
All right.
Is this all of your team? This is great, great.
Yeah. I grabbed a tight fit. I'm Coach Novy, this is my soccer team. I'm not going to go through all of them because as you can see, I have a big team in more ways than one. We won conference this year, which Murphy has not done in boy soccer since 2012. We had three goals scored on us all season in conference and we scored fifty goals in conference. So it's, defense is a big deal to me and we have a very good defense. Also, we kind of made a statement in the state as a whole as far as what western North Carolina can do in soccer. In our style, the soccer, it has viability at the state level where we made it to the third round. We ended up with four all-conference players and conference player of the year. But we, I mean, we, we had a good season. I'm not, I, I can't talk as much as everybody else goes up here because not everybody wants to hear about them, so. But I'm very proud of them. When I came to this team three years ago, I thought it was going to be easy peasy because if you see these boys, you're like, oh wow, that's a talented group of kids. I failed to realize that personalities come with this town. So it was a bit more of a struggle than I thought. We managed to reel that in and really accomplish some stuff this year and I'm very proud of them for that. We have nine seniors, so the, the younger guys coming up, they got some big shoes to fill. And, but I think we can do it. The style will be a little bit different next year, but we'll keep pushing forward. We are also, I think, the first Smoky Mountain Conference team in probably seven years to make it to the third round of playoffs where we played Greystone Day and they came in second in the state. But yeah, I'm very proud of them. They're a great group of kids as much as their goofballs, but I'm all right with that, I like a little bit of personality. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Because I'm a soccer dad, right? I'll pray my children play soccer. And during that time, especially with our son Caleb, who just had a passion for soccer. And he, there were so few on the team that he actually played every minute of every game. And, but I remember as a parent, there was not a lot of support for soccer. And so I used to, I remember at one point, I ran a concession stand so we could buy gloves for the goalie. And hopefully that's changed. But it's, and I know you're aware of this, but I think I read somewhere that during a soccer game that you typically run around six miles, if not more. So it's a, it's a grueling sport and people don't realize how difficult it is. And I think our, our son, we've been very fortunate with our children as far as breaks, but our older son Colton broke his cosh at Taylor's. He broke his collarbone playing soccer and our younger son Caleb broke his wrist that looked terrible, but playing soccer. So you got your great shin guard, right? That's pretty much our protection we have. I commend you all for, for playing a great sport and just continue to play.
And our style of soccer is a bit closer to football than what you imagine. We play mountain soccer, that's what I'm talking about. As I said, the state doesn't recognize how we play soccer. It's hard to deal with our physicality, yeah, so.
Well, even though you've got none of that, you have a norm next year, it looks like you've got a pretty good combination to work with. So I think that's exciting. I don't think you can do this next year.
Yeah, I'm sure they are aware of this too, but I think there are a lot of scholarship potentials for soccer players. So we definitely encourage you in that direction.
Congratulations on your season.
If any standard should be set for who a coach needs, it's coaching. If there's any second of film he watches, if there's any stat inject he watches, if there's any amount of time he spends in soccer is beyond what anybody would think. He stayed up late after every field game watching all the film. He couldn't sleep, the sacrifice he made would be beyond you. And I think we should give credit to the coach for what he filmed this year and I thank you very much.
And as we were saying somewhere earlier today, Murphy Middle School also wants to have a conference in soccer. So hopefully you'll be getting some of that, so make sure to add books already got here. So again, congratulations. Okay, let me see if I got this student presentation. So I'm going to say that if you wish to, to, and not listen to the rest of this, unless I skip you for any more, have I skipped you? Okay, you all are more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of this. Okay, now, now we end that, we're going to say, superintendent, Dr. Williams.
You have any package personnel report this month. Also, you have the legislative class size report that you can look at there. And then one other thing that I just mentioned, I mentioned last month about the administrative review for school nutrition. That is completed and again, we got a very good report. There was just a few minor things that they asked for correction and those have been done. So it's totally complete and we didn't receive a letter commending our staff and everything they did to be successful with that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, all right. Well, we have a motion and a second to approve Dr. Williams' report as presented. A motion by Mr. Coleman, second. Second by Mr. Tatham, right? By Mr. Coleman, discussion. Mr. Tatham, discussion.
I just have one question, Madam Chair. Dr. Williams, on this class time report, what is the league count called? It matches the chapter language, section count. I think always, I wasn't sure if Mr. would have it in.
I can answer that, I'm ready, Dr. Williams. Go ahead. It's just the number of teachers. When I copied it off, it just comes out that way, all the teachers that are counted and that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion from board members? Mr. Chapman, roll call number please.
Mr. Matthews, aye. Mrs. Gadd. Mr. Wurkman. Mr. Coleman. Mr. Tatham. Mr. Ellis. Mrs. Braker.
Aye. All right, that brings us to the finance officer's report too. And so we yield the floor back to Dr. Williams.
Okay, the main page that I've got here in front of me, you can look it up. A lot of this information here on the state public school fund would be dealing with grants that have been received or other things from the state that they have passed. You can see I come there, test result, bonuses, bonuses that teachers and others will receive. On the local expenditure part, that's just what you approved last month at Lincoln County Condition coming out of our half set sales packs. The federal program, as you know, for a while, there were some limits on our federal funding. Not that all of this indicates that, but these are our
As I mentioned, clearly, we've had a lot of student recognition with our athletic programs and our SGA programs, so these students who are involved in each of these programs, coming out here today and last month to speak to us about what they're doing in their school, I'd just really like to hear it from students. You know, we can get up here and talk about a lot of different things, but I just really think the impact really comes from our students, it's from their perspective, it's what they're taking away, it's what they need to share with their peers, and I love to see that. I love to see that enthusiasm and how they approach different situations and how they want to implement different things and how they, how they want to create different programs or to meet different needs in their schools. And some of them are very collective and the same across each of the schools, and some of them are very unique to their schools. So appreciate the initiative the students take and the sponsors that work with those students in order to facilitate, to facilitate those programs. If you're looking for some sports events to go to, our middle school teams have all started their basketball program. I think it's probably within what, about a month now since they've been underway. Andrews High School and Hollis Dam High School, their basketball programs are in full swing. I think they're moving close to the same, maybe three weeks, something like that. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention Murphy High School. They are now in the fifth round in the final four, and they will play Starmount tomorrow night, 7:30, Murphy High School. So come out and support them. They win this game, they're going set. So good luck, Murphy High School, in your, in your game against Starmount. I know that they would appreciate the community coming out and supporting them, so if you're looking for something to do, come on down. And then a couple of things coming up that we've got, I saw that Ms. Parker had mentioned that they're kind of having like a, I forget what she calls it, Tuesday night at Andrews Middle School, they do some things, and I think the third year in a row that they've done this, I've been fortunate enough to go the last couple of years, but they'll have hot chocolate, and they'll have popcorn, you'll get to see artwork that students have done, and you'll get to hear their media specialists read a story in the library, you'll get to hear your band playing. So I encourage you to come out and support those students. I believe it begins at 6 o'clock, Murphy, excuse me, Andrews Middle School. Now, I was looking forward to attending that. And then, the School of Innovation, or the theater, they are going to present Rudolph the Red Nems Radio this coming Monday and Tuesday. They'll have two shows, they'll begin at 6:00 p.m. each night, it's $10 at the door. If you haven't come to a production, you should come. It's a literal collective of students from all over this county, not only students who attend schools on this campus, but students from Andrews and Murphy High School are involved. I very much enjoy the productions that we put on. I was able to go to Myth Understood last month, and that was a great little production, and I enjoy being to see the creativity of our students and how hard they work with very little that they are given. So come on out, support your votes. All right, moving right along.
Chair, I'm sorry, can I say something?
Sure.
Sorry, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but you mentioned that about the Veterans Day.
Yeah.
So I was a few minutes late, but I did sneak in through the door at Andrews High School, and I was, I want to personally thank Mr. Ellis for his comments, and it's always good, but especially the emphasis he put on our Vietnam War veterans. My dad volunteered for the Vietnam War, and I'm thankful he came back alive, or I wouldn't be here. He was a door gunner in the U.S. Army, and not many of them get back. And he is a, he's a Baptist preacher, and so I'm a preacher's kid, so that's what I even know, anyhow. In a, in a mad way, yes.
Preacher's kids, yes.
Yeah, proud of him, proud of him. But it took me a long time to see this, but the only place he is comfortable in public is a church. Took me a long time to figure that out, so sometimes he goes to the veteran ceremonies, sometimes he goes to his grandsons' ball games, and sometimes he's not able to, you know? He can't, he can't be anywhere with anybody behind him. If he sits in public, he's got to be with his back to the wall. Took me a long time to figure those things out, because he does not talk about his experience in the war. But our veterans paid a high price, most of them, not.
Yes, yes.
And, thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you for sharing that. Again, you know, I'm going to tack on that. I'm fortunate where I had both grandmothers, my own brothers, several cousins, and uncles who have served in different wars, and, you know, I know Mr. Ellis is not human or him. But the facts and the information that he highlights in that program, I'm just appreciative that you bring that out, that this younger generation actually knows those things, so thank you. Not taken time to do that. Thank you to those schools who work together to make that happen. And I love hearing the kids sing, and cannot remember, of course, teachers, so forgive me, but she did a great job this year with his kids when they were singing, and I so enjoyed that. I love the reading about the white table, that was great. Just so many different things that have such a profound impact, sometimes you don't realize the impact that it really has on our students, and so I'm grateful for those folks who take those things on and who value that and wish to impart that to our students. So thank you again. Okay. Next item on the agenda will be policy amendments for second reading. And as you can see, there are several there that are listed, and then there's number 11, which is to adopt because it's reporting to the external agencies. So I make a motion to approve the amendments to policies as presented with the exception of policy 7100 and to adopt policy 5150, 7313, reporting to external agencies. Do I have a second? All of them but 7100. I mean, I'm not making a motion for that. I have no problem with any of the other policies, and I understand that we got to adopt this one about the reporting to external agencies, and we really don't have, you know, that that's something that's come down, but.
So can we do it to where we have a session about moving it in? Like if we make a motion to do that? I guess if we make a motion, second, you're going to make a decision. Very, very good job.
I think someone can make a motion except the 7100 after we vote. So I'll just take that motion.
Okay. All right. So I made a motion, like I said, my discussion on 7100 is, I feel like what we currently have in place, that's acceptable for how we select administration, how we prioritize some things. I'm not looking to my personal, I'm just not looking to micromanage those things that are in place. That's my discussion on that. Mr. Matthews, discussion?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look it up. Fellow board members, discussion.
So one clarification, someone can introduce a motion to adopt 7100 after we vote on this?
Mm-hmm, yes.
For the, the only discussion I would have agreed on, and second, is I've heard the concerns that were brought up about it before, and I do agree with the not micromanaging that. I think that if, if, the only, I don't know if it would be something that we would, I guess we would have to change it, but like in those situations where, I don't believe it's our job to hire personnel principals, assistant principals and things like that, and I don't want to get into that. However, maybe an exception being prior to the announcement of your sheet being given that job, maybe the board giving an opportunity, whether it be text, phone call, or whatever, just we are, these are the candidates we have, this is the candidate we believe we're going to use to hire. Do you have any input? And not, not input of, I know you can't hire with the input of, well, I happen to know this about this person, something that's been hit through the cracks or whatever, just some, some little thing in there to where, again, not that I'm looking to be involved in it, but almost as just another trip up. To be honest, you know, we'll get asked, what do you think about Todes though? And sometimes it'll catch us, catch me off the court because I don't know about it, and that's fun, because it's not our job, but I still think it would be good if we had prior notification before officially notification goes out.
I would ask.
It would have a lot.
I don't have, I don't need, have a need for a special call meeting. I mean, like, you guys know, I don't, my grandkids, you guys are all right, but I want to know, like I want a phone call that says, hey, we're going to hire this person? Do you have any objection? If it's, if it's from my grandparents, and I may know them, I'd at least like to have that opportunity. And, and what he just said is, I don't want somebody to say, hey, what do you think about somebody, CJ, right? Hey, what do you think about CJ? What are we talking about? See, I didn't know about this, right? So that makes me look foolish, because I didn't even know that he'd been hired, so then I go to a ballgame or something, and somebody says that to me, that makes us look bad. And I don't, I think there could just be a, just a quick, I mean, we talked about this meeting the day before we have it, and then you call into one of us. I don't see a problem with, hey, we're going to hire this person, do you have any personal, or do you have any input? Negative, positive? Nope. No? You do your job, that's it. Or, yeah, you know what, just talk about something. You know, I don't, I don't think that that's a bad thing, you know? Especially if you're talking about my community, and you're talking about somebody in my community. That's just how it would look like. I'm not trying to micromanage, I do not want this job. And you guys know, I come down and talk to everyone all the time. And I don't, well, let me say it, like, I don't want to make that decision or anything like that. I tell people that all the time. This is the rules of the school system. I do not follow any of the rules, right? I don't necessarily know anything about education, but I know about facilities. So there's my specialty that I bring to this board, is that that's what my military specialty was, was facilities. But if you're talking about somebody in my community, then yeah, that's my opinion. Because honestly, I'm rather going to say, it's up to you. I don't know anything that's ever bad, you know? But if I do know something bad, and we hire that person, then I'm going to come to your office and say, hey, I wish you guys would talk to me. And this is my community. So I would like to say something since you're talking about it right now, to go along with what Mr. Coleman says about, it's not our job, and I don't want that job. And I know what you're saying, so don't take it the wrong way, but it is, it is our job. You know, like our packet, if we're giving them, you know, it even says on there, it's, that's the recommendation superintendent. But my, my concern, it's not, it's not about micromanaging, you can say, I want this person, it's that we start people in positions, and then, let's say, two or three weeks, then is when we actually hire those people. So, so what happens if there is a problem and we don't know? Maybe that's a question for the attorney, if somebody's been in the conference a few weeks, and then all of a sudden, the board says, no, I'm hiring this person for a reason. That's, that is my concern. So that's why I introduced this policy, and if you're not aware of it, all it does is it changes one thing to just say, our current policy says if we hire people between meetings, that we authorize the superintendent to go ahead and hire them. So the only, the only thing that I added, that's what we're talking about, it's not a change, it's just an addition to say, when we're hiring certain positions, if it's between meetings, that should be a special call meeting, so we can discuss that. Not, not a person working on a job for a few weeks and then the board decide. Because essentially, you either, you either have no choice, you have no vote, when it's our legal obligation to hire people. The superintendent recommends hires, we hire them, or you run into a potential situation where we're having to talk to the attorney, now what do we do? So that's, that's my whole reason for introducing that. It's not to micromanage, it's not to say, well, I want to know, well, the applicants are, any of that stuff that is in the leagues. I don't want to get in leagues, I'm not an educator either, but I, I do have concerns with the way timing of things falls, so that's why I have to do that.
I do have a concern, I very miss the elderly. And after, after the fact, then we are responsible, because we vote on whether or not that person is on, but essentially, they're already hired when it's put up for a vote. So what are, what are, you know, if I vote against that person, then I'm going to look like that.
You're going to look like it's personal.
Right.
And that's not fair to you.
Well, it's not fair to any of us, I don't know. All right? You know, and if I'm, you know, when I keep it in the name of the student, I'm probably going to be happy all my life. I know about people. And so, that concerns me. That's my concern.
Like I said, I'm not even for, honestly, I'm not for a special call meeting, I'm for a kids' phone call. I think that each, each member has a phone call, so they just want to let you know, we're going to do this, do you have an objection?
And I can agree with that. I don't necessarily think we need a special call meeting. And I know what you're saying, so don't take it the wrong way, but it is, it is our job. You know, like our packet, if we're getting them, it even says on there, it's, that's the recommendation superintendent. But my, my concern, it's not, it's not about micromanaging and saying, I want this person. It's that we start people in positions and then, let's say, two or three weeks, then it's when we actually hire those people. So, so what happens if there is a problem and we both know? Maybe that's a question for the attorney, if somebody's been in the job for a few weeks and then all of a sudden the board says, no, I'm hiring this person for a reason. That's, that is my concern. So that's why I introduced this policy. If you're not aware of it, all it does is it changes one thing to just say, our current policy says if we hire people between meetings, that we authorize the superintendent to go ahead and hire them. So the only, the only thing that I added, that's what we're talking about, it's not a change, it's just an addition to say, when we're hiring certain positions, if it's between meetings, that should be a special call meeting so we can discuss that. Not, not a person working on a job for a few weeks and then the board decide. Because essentially, you either, you either have no choice, you have no vote, and it's our legal obligation to hire people. The superintendent recommends hires, we hire them. Or you run into a potential situation where we're having to talk to the attorney, now what do we do? So that's, that's my whole reason for introducing that. It's not to micromanage, it's not to say, well, I want to know, well, the applicants are, any of that stuff. That is in the weeds. I don't want to get in the weeds, I'm not an educator either. But I, I do have concerns with the way timing of things falls. So that's why I made this motion.
I do have a concern, I very disagree. I mean, after, after the fact, then we are responsible because we vote on whether to hire that person. But essentially, they're already hired when it's put up for a vote. So what are, what are, you know, if I vote against that person, then I'm going to look like that.
You're going to look like it's personal.
Right.
And that's not fair to you.
Well, it's not fair to any of us, I don't know. All right, you know, and if I'm, you know, when I keep the name of the superintendent, it's probably been hard for all my life. I know about people. And so, that concerns me. That's my concern.
Like I said, I'm not even for, honestly, I'm not for a special call meeting. I'm for a canned phone call. I think that each, each member has a phone call to say, just wanted to let you know, we're going to do this. Do you have an objection?
And I can agree with that. I don't necessarily think we need a special call meeting.
But the other side of that is exactly what she's saying. That person cannot be hired and then two weeks later, we vote. Like, that's not, that's not fair to us.
There actually is a policy in place if allowing them to speak to that. We do have a policy that directs them very nicely.
I'm trying to hear you, I can't, I can't quite hear what you said, Dr. Woody.
I would say we do have a policy about hiring between board meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it's seventy-one hundred, it's number three, and I mean, again, the hiring is the Board of Education. That person is not hired, you keep saying the word hired. The person is not hired until the Board of Education says they're hired. So they can work in that position, they can be training, but they are not, they have no rights. Because they are not, they're hiring, it's contingent upon approval of the Board of Education.
But then that's where you're going to.
There really is no issue of allowing a person to start. I mean, if you want them to start training or not, however you want to do it, but it doesn't, there is no legal, they have no legal right to the job until the Board of Education votes that they are hired. So anything prior to that is...
But if the announcements are already being made that they're hired, that they have the job.
So then if there's a problem the day of, like, it's right here, three or four days later, let's say there's a problem, one of us knows something or something like that, and now you look foolish. Whereas if there had just been a canned miss call, that says, hey, so and so, do you have any input? I'm telling you right now, at nine ninety-nine percent of the time, there's going to be no input. But at least when it's been at a ballgame and somebody says, what do you think about such and such? Or at least I know about it.
So we would just need to amend seventy-one hundred, make a motion to add where it's a phone call or something? I mean, if we say it has to be a special call meeting, it could be, but if not, like, just a forced phone, how are these be worded where prior to announcement of the hiring corresponds between all board members? Must do that?
That's, we have to be careful with that assumption law if you're doing that too, all right?
To make sure that it's not...
No, you can, you're right. I mean, we have to be careful, mindful of that. Well, the, the other, the other issue is that, or another alternative, is to handle these types of issues in closed session. Because the, the other potential issue is with a phone call, a phone call to each one of us. If, if I get a phone call, or say, you get a phone call, and you have an issue with something, who knows about it? I don't. The other five board members do not. Well, then you have your way issue, and then you tell me, he can, he can discuss that issue with you if it's something that's valid, it's not just that I like that guy, right? It's something else other than that, and then he can have that discussion with you.
So on average, how many persons do we hire a year?
I don't know, but in the last two days, we try and hire, you know, a lot, you hire everybody. And, and I'll just read it. What, what this says, this section says, "All applicants selected for employment must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board." And that, that meets general statute. "In situations in which an employee must be hired between board meetings, the superintendent is authorized to approve hiring of such personnel contingent upon approval by the board at the next scheduled board meeting." And then the only, the only addition would be, after that, "A special call meeting will be held to hire school administrators, principals, assistant principals, and directors between regular board meetings."
So that's the call we do at that?
No, that's what I'm saying, it's the petition. If you don't want to do a special call meeting, you can just wait to hire people at the meeting instead of between weeks.
If I could comment on that too, and of course, I come from that standpoint, I was a principal for many years. There, of course, all these positions are really important, but I think, you know, when you're talking about a principal position, that's why I brought principal and we're directors. I don't, I don't see a problem with, with that amendment to this policy. I, I think those are really important positions. And I think that, you know, when you talk about phone calls and things like that, I get it, but, I mean, hopefully, eventually, you know, Kim and John can tell you, and Tom as well, I mean, years ago, I can tell you, I mean, hopefully I can now too, but the principal did change a lot, right? We knew they were, and, and so for the past few years, we've had a lot of change in principals and administrators. So, again, I don't have a problem with the, with the proposed amendment on that policy, so.
I would say, like, the, maybe the latest administrators that have been approved, they're on an interim basis. So I feel like since they're in an interim, on an interim basis, it's not necessarily, okay, this is it forever and stone. Now, that may be what we intend, but, like, if we've got them hired in an interim position and should something arise, should something happen, that we need to reevaluate, we have that way to go back and we have recourse to evaluate, reevaluate.
But a seven, like, let's say, and this has nothing to do with anybody that's been hired recently. I don't want you guys to think that in any way this has anything to do with anything hires. It just, what you just said though, let's say that you hired somebody, Andrews, and, and I know that person or I know something about that person that is a conflict, it's seven months until end of the year. That's a long time. And so, I don't think that this is irrational. I think that, I absolutely agree, actually, I think a meeting, a thirty-minute meeting, hey, here's the person, and it's in between, and it's an emergency, and yeah, we can, we can come together for a thirty-minute meeting and all get. I don't, I think that, that's, I mean, like, seven months. Let's say that something came up, and right now, one of our principals is in the interim, seven months from now, that's, I don't know, I think it makes us look bad.
But if something were to come up, I don't think we would hold them in that position for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, that makes us look terrible. That makes us look like that we didn't do our due diligence to put that person in place. Is if, if you hired him this month and in January, this new principal comes up, that, that hurts what the public thinks about this school and this...
Not just the public, but, excuse me, the students and the faculty. That's major in that.
Well, and the thing with the interim, this is a bit off topic, but I, I think it potentially also hurts a candidate if somebody thinks, well, I've got this job and in six months I might not have a job. So, but that's a separate topic, and that's in the weeds also. If, if that's the way the superintendent wants to hire individuals in the year, I'm fine with that. That's, that's his prerogative. But I do agree with Mr. Ellis. And I'll say one other thing, just, just an example, if we look at the sheet that we have right now, it says hiring recommendations, but the effective date of employment has already passed. So, these are teaching positions and would not be affected by this policy, by the way. This is only for select positions. This would still allow us to do what we just did tonight and, and give the superintendent, the organization to hire for most positions. But, but we have this right here as an example of, here's, here's positions that we, that had not yet been hired, but have already started. So, so that's all I'm trying to avoid, is a situation with certain positions. That's it.
Any other discussion?
All right, can we ask for recommendations from the board on how you, how you read this or how you look at that?
Yeah, this is pretty standard operating procedure for, I mean, because first, I mean, you've got a busy school system where sometimes you, I mean, you have teachers and you need to get people in the classroom and you need to get them in there. And so, if you are wanting, and I didn't think I heard this, but if you're wanting to wait to make decisions, to hire people until the board makes that decision, you're never going to get those positions filled. So that's why this is written, the way it's written, is to go ahead, have the superintendent or have the side-based administrator make a recommendation, it goes up the chain or whatever, however it's done. Superintendent makes a recommendation, okay, this is who we want, we've done the background check, it's good. I mean, unless you all want to have a meeting then to make a, essentially make the approval of every single hire to have a meeting, that, you just can't run it that way. Now, so that's why the language says very clearly that the person is not hired until it's contingent upon board hiring. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know in theory how you're going to operate unless you want us to simply have meetings all the time.
But we're not talking about teachers, we're talking about principals and assistant principals.
Assistant principals and directors only.
So, yeah, so then the, the new language that was put into this policy is, I mean, it is forcing the hand to say, we're not going to wait till the next meeting, we're going to require that there be a special call meeting for principals, assistant principals, and directors so that you don't have this long gap. So as soon as the superintendent theoretically makes a recommendation, says, okay, you're the person, because by the way, you have to tell it to that person because they may not accept the job, right? So superintendent has to tell the person, okay, you're my recommendation, I'm going to take you to the board. The new language then says that's the superintendent or the board will have a special call meeting and not wait two or three weeks? I mean, they'll, they'll have it then. So I think that's, you know, to get to your point of wanting to have a quick resolution, that's what this language allows for. Or not allows for, it mandates that you have a meeting, a special call meeting prior to your next meeting so that you don't have this long lack period for these positions, for those specific positions.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion we adopt seventy-one hundred.
Well, so we've got a motion in the second floor that we need to vote on before we can take that. So, we have a motion in a second on the floor to approve the amendments and policies presented with the exception of seventy-one hundred, to adopt this fifty-one, fifty-nine, seventy-three, thirteen, reporting to external agencies. So we need to vote on that first before we move forward with anything else. So, Mr. Chapman, can you roll call vote that motion please?
Mrs. Dennis, how you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? No. Mr. Coleman? Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Tatum?
Aye.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
Now, I would like to make a motion we adopt changes to policy seventy-one hundred.
Mr. Tatum, any further discussion?
No.
Just a second, a minute.
Yes, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis, further discussion?
Kim, do you have a problem with that? I mean, is, do you feel like it's overrated for us? I mean, you can speak freely, I mean, I don't want you to tell me.
How are you, Dr. Woody?
I did, I'm bothered. You're basically saying that you have a conflict.
I don't think that that's true though, I think that we're just asking...
Well, I'll give you an example. He said about the ballgame, I had not even hired that person that day. I had not even talked to them about the job. So you say at the ballgame, somebody else, it ended up in that person, but I didn't even call that person in, and you heard the folks, I think the driving folks, I called them in on Monday at three o'clock, talked to them, and offered them the job. So, you know, then immediately, you notice the text, after I said, I take it, they'll take it, and then exchange it. Look at the time of the text that I sent out to the board in four years. I think the next, I think they don't think that, or whatever, but it's very quickly happened. So, yes, it does bother me. Do you just want me to be upfront?
No, absolutely not, I don't.
I'm just going to tell you, it bothers me.
I was going to take it here again because, like I said, I don't wish to, I don't sit through these interview process with the candidates that apply for these different positions. I trust that the folks that we have in those roles who sit through interviews, who talk to candidates, who do the due diligence, the background, and find out background information and talk to other folks that are outside our system or whatever it may be, I trust that as long as they've done what they have done, that they're going to have a judgment and make the best decision for the, based off the candidates that are interviewed. I don't wish to have a closed session or a meeting in between the meetings when we hire an administration because the board hires the superintendent, the superintendent hires those below him, whether it be directors, whether it be principals, whether it be vice principals. Those principals on each of their campus, they decide who's going to be the best fit for their school. I don't know that, I don't, I'm not at the early college every single day, I'm not a Ranger school, I'm not a Stanwell, I'm not a Andrews, I'm not a Carpe. I don't have day-to-day interaction with what's going to be best. I defer those judgments to those folks. So, and while I do understand, you know, hey, board members, we want to be in the loop of who it is that we're going to hire, I will say this, you know, I feel like Dr. Woody is very transparent with us and tells us, one, even if we ask him, even if we go, he gives us the information in a very timely manner. I too was also called off guard because someone called me and mentioned the hire and I took the phone up and I called Dr. Woody and said, I didn't realize the decision had been made. He said, actually, we literally, this was probably what, three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon, we literally just spoke to the person that we were going to choose and offered that job to them. So, you know, I could say a whole lot about a lot of different things, but I'm not going to. I'm just going to say that I think the way the current policy reads more than appropriate for what we need to do. But that's my, that's my feeling, in my opinion, because I, I don't wish to have her job, I don't wish to do that. I don't wish to hire a coach for this county. I appreciate everything you do and all the work that you put into it, so. But you know what, I'm one, I'm one member of the seventy-minute board, so.
I do agree that it, as far as the actual process of the hiring would be, the three of you perhaps on paper, as was stated, it technically is our job to actually approve the recommendation. However, I go back to what I said at the very beginning, I do, I do trust Dr. Woody and do trust Kim, I do trust all the people there involved in doing that, and that's where I go back to the, the phone call. And just when you made the statement of, you know, I don't know what you said, the, 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 I do trust those involved enough towards it, if one of them does say something, I don't think you would hold that conversation from others in the process at all. So, I mean, I would still go back to, if we changed anything, it would just be to where prior to announcement, the same like was stated, and I didn't know this until right now, you pretty much have to offer the job and then they have to accept the job. right now, you pretty much have to offer the job, and then they have to accept the job. If you don't do that prior to talking less, then you're, you're going in a circle chasing your tail, because that, that step has to be done prior, like, by the time the conversation would be, hey, not we're going to hire, we had this conversation, we offered the job, this person accepted the job, and I'm coming to take, that's the process that has to happen. It can't be other than that. So I think if we were looking for things to, to know of it, a little bit prior to, would be the phone call or something like that, don't, because I think by the time you have the meeting, but not the hire, like, you'd, you'd already extended the hand of the hire before you would ever have the meeting, or you would have to do every candidate prior to the, prior to them actually giving, you know, handing the job to them, you have to have that meeting on every candidate to be in front of them, if that makes any sense at all. I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I think so, but I think, and I don't know how this is handled, I don't want to know some of this, um, but I think you're correct, those are the steps that have to be made, but it's, it's also reasonable to think that those steps could be, and maybe they are, um, you know, I am going to recommend that you were hired to the board in its contention on their vote, um, you know what I mean?
Well, it is contingent or above, but you have to get to that, he has, he has to do that, the office of hire to the meeting.
Correct. Yes, but like, if we have, if we have a public announcement that particular individuals have been hired for a particular job, and then, say, in two weeks, in the board meeting, we have a board meeting, what do we actually need to vote on the hiring of that person? I, I'm willing to rescind my second and make it just, we're, just a phone call.
Our, our, we need to...
Just a phone call, hey, we just want you to know, this is your community, or this is who we're looking at, do you have any input? Ninety-nine, what, nine percent of the time, I'm going to say no, but at least I know that...
Or just another option, what if we push the start date until after our next meeting?
Well, I mean, but what if it's, what if it's tomorrow, what if it's tomorrow and this happens, and then, and that person has to wait until next, you know, I mean, if it's a principal or a assistant principal or a director, I don't think that it should happen yet. And I think that it's, I don't want to make a decision for you, I just want...
I don't either.
I just want, if there is, and is there, there is something there, then I would want to say, hey, well, guys, yes, check this?
Okay.
There's a deal, I'm going to deal. I, I just think that...
I can definitely do that, I mean, that's all I, and I...
That's all, I would even ask, even if it's not in the policy, I would, because you know, if, even if you knew that we're going to bring it up, that, hey, you're going to make a hire in a principal AP or a director position, I'm going to canvass the, the board and say, do you have any input, one way or the other? And like I said, I'm probably going, I don't know you. So I would have said, nope, I don't have any input, right? I've not heard one bad thing about you, and this is not about you, but that's what I'm about, that's, you're the, you're the closest one to you, right? So I would say, no, sounds great, and I, and then hang up the phone, you know, but at least I got the chance. But what if I'm your neighbor and, you know, we got, you know, all this stuff up in the backyard and the Anacostas...
You don't got my head, do you?
I was like, ah...
So, we already do that now? Okay. Mr. Ellis, again, okay, can you clarify for me, are you keeping your second or are you rescinding your second? What are we doing there?
I'm going to rescind my second, uh, and I just think that it should be a canvassing question, that, and when you make, when you make a hire, um, somebody else my second, but I, I think that when you make a hire, I think that we should at least have a phone call, you know?
And you know what, I mean, I try to reject anything, tags, that type of thing.
I mean, and like I said, it's just for APs, principals, you know this person? Nope? Okay, just want to let you know that he's, you know, he's probably going to meet this job, or we're looking at him, and if you have any input on this, no, no.
Okay.
Well, he would be, he wants you to know that we need to go into, extend the offer to hire, you know, maybe it's five minutes before we actually have the conversation, you know, I don't know. I mean, would you do that, I mean, do you put that in the policy? Is that what you're asking for?
Not necessarily, we think we need to put that in the policy, and I will say this again, we're going to...
No, I don't think we have to put it in the policy, because if you know that you don't call us, then we're going to bring this back up again, I mean, like, that, that to me, that's all you need, and then it's just, like, a hunch, you know? I think that's, I, I just think that's, um...
Well, again, I'll say, as Mary's fourth wife with us, and he, he notifies us about things and, and to keep everybody on the same page, once offers have been extended and candidates have accepted.
Absolutely, now, don't say that I'm...
I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
No, I'm talking about the way, I'm not saying anything that you have done anything and shared about anything, or anything like that, right? I just, I just, it's in my community, and you're hiring somebody in my community, I would just like at least to question, hey, is there anything? Nope? That's it.
Okay.
And I'm good with this, like, you know?
Okay. We just have a motion on the floor.
We should just have a second, seven more seconds?
Yes, yes, and then we have a second, rescinded.
So, so I, so I can understand, the motion on the floor is to adopt policy seventy-one hundred as amended, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so ask for a second, and if there isn't one, then it will die.
Well, we do have a second now, Mr. Murphy has seconded.
Correct, alright.
So we have a motion in a second, and I'm going to call for final comments, and then we're going to roll call vote this. Okay, so yes to accept the amendment and no to reject the amendment, are there any further comments? Any further comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Chapman?
Mrs. Dennis, how do you vote?
No, as long as I get a follow-up.
Mr. Murphy, how do you vote? Mr. Coleman?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Mrs. Raper?
No.
Vote for three. voting.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business, we have the ratification superintendent following needs-based grant application, uh, based off, uh, what we have discussed previously with amendments, so, um, I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the superintendent following needs-based grant application. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, second by Mr. Coleman, I don't have any discussion, Mr. Coleman, do you have discussion?
No.
Okay, fellow board members, discussion?
Yes, ma'am, sure. Can we get an explanation on exactly what we're voting on here?
Okay, basically, and, and I can, I can defer to the attorney's, his, his recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, start over.
Okay, my, uh, my understa, let me pull up my memo real quick, I had it up and my computer crashed. My understanding is that the superintendent, based on, um, the June fifth meeting, believed that he had the authority to file the needs-based application, uh, on behalf of the motion being the facilities plan for Murphy Middle, Murphy Elementary, Martins Creek, and Peachtree to a single pre-K through eighth grade school. And that application, based upon the, his presumption, he filed, that, that is what the board proved, he filed the needs-based application for that. We have since learned, however, that, uh, there actually was not a motion made authorizing the superintendent to file that application. And so this motion would be to ratify action that the superintendent took based on what he thought was the authority that was given to him. So if you approve the motion, it simply approves the action as if it was done from the authority given on June the third. If you do not approve the motion, then you are essentially saying that the, uh, application needs to be rescinded because the superintendent did not have the authority to file it. Um, and so that is what you're voting on, um, is to, is to get authorized, you're, you're going back and retroactively giving your permission to the superintendent, giving your authorization to the superintendent to file that application.
Thank you. Okay, so you've heard the explanation. Uh, Mr. Chapman, roll call vote this, please.
Mr. Murphy, how do you vote?
No.
Is that no?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Uh...
Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Nay.
Mr. Tatum?
No.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes. Hi.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
Vote for three and favor her.
Okay. All right, that brings us to ratification for the architectural services for the roof replacement at Andrews Elementary School, so, uh, we, we met in committee and discussed this. Actually, Mr. Coleman, um, I'm going to let, I'm going to let you hammer this, I'm going to defer to you.
Yeah, I would, just making sure, we, I think, uh, most of them, we, uh, give it to Aria to do the roof at Andrews Elementary.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Ellis? So, uh, Mr. Mr. Coleman, additional comments?
Um, one of the main factors that, I think we got six?
Yes, six.
Uh, six that we looked at, uh, one of the glaring things would be, we have history with RBI that just completed a job for us, and so that was, uh, good. Also, there, they came in most prepared, uh, to the meeting, boots on the ground, then done their work, actually met back over there with them for about forty minutes last week, uh, and just think that, uh, they did all those things, they were the best government in the world.
Mr. Ellis?
Same thing, they came in, uh, they met first one, uh, it was about Cherokee County, they'd already looked at, uh, Andrews Elementary, um, so I think they were cleared up there.
I agree, and, and we, we had another group that I would have felt confident going with, had we not chosen this group, um, and, uh, but they were highly prepared, uh, they, we worked well, and we had a good working relationship already with them, uh, they understand what our expectations are, um, so I feel like they did a fantastic job with this as well. Uh, fellow board members, any discussion?
Ma'am, Chair, I have a couple of questions, so, is this the company that did the interment school?
Yes.
Okay, and this, are we, is this just to hire them to, is this to hire them to fix the roof, or they just did an architect?
No, they do the architect, architect plan and then... They will also do one...
Okay, they're off, they get this stuff, okay. Okay. All right. So what, when, when would we expect next step, whatever the next step is for, for this process?
They're saying that it would be boots on the ground, um, workers.
Whatever the first step is.
That would be a few years, something, okay.
Yes, yes, so they, they had told us that it would, it was very realistic, and that they felt very strongly that they could get this work done in the summertime, so that we would not have impacted students, um, student learning and student disruption, so...
Very realistic, very strong, what you're moving against.
Yeah.
The other thing is, though, that they want to point out that it's, uh, of course, we're dealing with the DPI and getting those through, they think things will go well, but they, they did say sometimes that's a long process, and that was one thing about them, they had dealt with things.
Right.
So they understand that.
Yeah.
But like, three weeks turned into three months.
Uh, so, uh, yeah, they understand that DPI process, I think, I think one of them also mentioned that, because, you know, we asked about it, uh, just based off of, uh, prior dealings with, with some things and having to deal with DPI, so I feel very confident, um, uh, that they're going to do a great job, and we're probably going to get some things, get some things resolved at Andrews Elementary, so, um, that'll be great. Okay, so any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Chapman?
Do you want to also authorize the superintendent, I mean, you're, you're selecting the architect group, contract obviously will have to be made and entered into with that architect, do you want to streamline the process and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and enter into the contract, so that can be going and it doesn't have to come back to you, uh, or do you, would you rather finalize contract, come back to you for approval?
No, I, I think we can streamline and, and give the superintendent that authority, um, I'm in my motion to reflect as such, so...
I think this is a good one, he said.
Okay.
Who made the motion? Steve, Mr. Coleman, you made a judicial motion, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
And Mr. Ellis was the second.
I would have to agree.
Okay, so Mr. Coleman?
You're adding, you're adding, uh, what the, Mr. Paul, you just said that you added that.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Evans would have to agree.
Mr. Ellis, do you...
I mean, we're going to get a phone call about that, though, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I said to the main, this is going to be some money, so, I mean, I'm going to move in my, my day, I'm going to need a phone call today.
Okay, so you're, you're keeping your second. Okay, uh, Mr. Chapman, can we roll call vote this as well?
Mr. Murphy, how do you vote?
Uh...
Mr. Coleman?
Uh...
Mr. Ellis?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Tatum?
Aye.
Mrs. Dennis?
Aye.
Mrs. Raper?
Aye.
All right, now, we are down to policy amendments for first reading, uh, we have, looks like eight, so, policy thirty-one hundred, policy thirty-two twenty, policy thirty-four hundred, policy forty-fifty, forty-one twenty, forty-two forty dash thirty, seventy-three twelve, uh, forty-two seventy, sixty-one forty-five, and seventy-nine ten. So, first reading only on those, uh, we'll come back next month and, uh, vote, vote on second readings for that, go ahead.
Second, that first policy, this thirty-one oh one, you said thirty-one hundred, just wanted to make sure...
I appreciate that.
Thirty-one oh one, do a liberal.
Yes, thirty-one oh one, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
We're not missing the thirty-one hundred, whatever's that?
I don't know, but, uh...
Right, I don't even...
I'm a little crude, uh, thank you, Mr. Matthews. It's a wrong guy, I, I'm not even sure. Uh, okay, so that brings us to the announcement of our next board meeting, uh, because the first, January first, off, on the first Thursday in a month, uh, we're going to push it back to Thursday, January the eighth, so our next board meeting will be Thursday, January the eighth at five-thirty, uh, looking forward to seeing you all then. Uh, I'm going to call for final comments, uh, Mr. Coleman, I'll begin with you.
What was your name?
Me?
Uh, can we still, you still want to do more of this when you get over? I like, you still want to do more of this when you get over?
Yes.
I'm going to say, he's a, he's a very good guitar player, too. Every town with a guitar player, you bring it with you. Huh?
No, as far as final comments, uh, shame, Mr. Paul, uh, District three, County Commissioner March, I'm running for that, I've thoroughly enjoyed my time here, Mr. Ellis, I'll hear on it, but, uh, there are people watching, so I'm going to put it out there.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tatum?
Um, voters are calling, I'm sorry.
That was just a joke, just a joke. Um, no, and I'll say, just, uh, final comments, uh, appreciate all the students being here.
Yes.
Appreciate y'all being here. And I would like to say also, um, uh, with Ms. Coleman here in the meeting, um, thank you for everything, um, we appreciate the job you did for us all these years, appreciate the excellent job you did at Hokes, and the excellent job you did at Peachtree, uh, for nothing but good things, you know, we expected and liked by the students and the staff, and, um, we miss you, we're blessed to have you, and hope you enjoy your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Evans?
Same, thank you so much. Um, uh, gosh, I'm going to say this, I was in Lowe's today, and, uh... on Facebook and read some of those comments, but, uh, it's so easy to sit at home and say these comments about people that hold these positions and people that run for these positions. I sit there and do nothing. I ran for this school's board position twice against the one. So, you can complain all you want, the election's, it'll be next November, do something about it, stop talking, start doing it. Um, thank you to my fellow board members who are willing to take the crap that we have to listen to on a monthly basis.
Monthly?
About, mainly, right? This is not an easy job and, uh, how much do we, a few hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a month, that's after taxes. I think it came out to like a thousand, forty dollars in six months. Um, we love kids, we love our communities, and that's the only reason we do that, do this, and, uh, Rosanna?
Yeah.
Mr. Raiber?
Well, I actually saw Mr. Ellis and that commissioner in Lowe's today, I was also there, and I turned and went to. That's a joke, I did not see you. I did go to Lowe's, but I didn't see him or anybody else. Um, I went there quickly and laughed, but, or check, like, it's, uh, the one thing I would just like to, I think you kind of see that, I mean, students are here now, I think you see that, um, through this board, and we don't always agree, we have disagreed in some areas, um, tonight and in the past, and I'm sure we'll disagree on some matters in the future, but, that being said, we do have respect for each other and we can, um, I draw cookies and, or any other, but, um, you know, we, we still get along well with each other as, as well as, you know, with the superintendent and the people here at the different offices as well, so.
Is that pretty good? Miss Gaddis?
Thank you, Ms. Garland, for your service.
Yeah.
All of our work you did, and thank all the, I thank all the principals and, uh, teaching staff of every school, and I wish you a very, very present.
Yeah. I can't say a whole lot, I can't hardly talk this much, but like everybody else at the system, Mr. Coleman, all our, all our system, all the central office staff, just everybody that makes up Cherokee County's system, uh, we've talked about how this job is tough, your job is tough.
That's fair, yes, sure, and thank you, yes.
We did thank you, so I know you probably, because that is another. And let me, let me back up again, I did thank you, Ms. Garland, you had some big shoes to fill.
Yes.
My wife and I was the trench ball for us, but I appreciate what you did. And since you guys backed up, I want to back up. Yeah, you backed up. To, to turn and say that it's big shoes to fill, you know, but, Melissa, have you been to Roma? Yeah, also. Always done excellent job, we're blessed to have you, and I know you're going to do a great college. Yeah.
Dr. Murray?
I did want to say thank you for all the students attending, they did some very good presentations, and we do appreciate that you're not going to do stuff.
I'm just going to add, the sentence of the night, uh, certainly don't do this job for the pay, uh, I mean, that's evident. I do appreciate that we can have an actual discussion about this and have a discussion and it not turned into a all-out brawl. Um, no, we don't always agree, well, we keep on, man, we're, we're, we don't always agree, but I think if we always agreed all the time, you know, I, I don't know, I just, yeah, it would be, and I. Six of us didn't be needed. Well, you're right, you're right, Ms. Gaddis. You're right, and, uh, so, um, not quite tonight where, and then last month, two and other months where we've had our students come out, uh, and present about different things that they've been involved in, uh, and achievements, I, I very much enjoy those things. I enjoy getting to come out to the schools, I enjoy getting to come out to the performances, I enjoy getting to celebrate our students and our staff, um, you know, seriously, uh, the things that the two of you deal with on a daily basis. I don't necessarily want to deal with that, I will support you however I can. Uh, I'm extremely appreciative, well, sitting in this chair the last few years, uh, of the support that I've had from Dr. Woody, from, from Central Office, from my fellow board members. Uh, some days it's very daunting, uh, and I think, oh dear, you know, but, um, it, I, I'm, I'm one of seven and, um, a collective effort, and I appreciate, I appreciate the efforts of all, of all my board members, uh, of all my, uh, folks in this, in this office up here, I appreciate what y'all do, uh, those folks who are in it every single day, in the trenches with these students, where I'm not, the gaps that you fill, uh, because they're very evident, uh, the roles that you play that are not just the one thing you're tasked with, but we, we know, we know that oftentimes you're tasked with being a parent, you're tasked with being a social worker, you're tasked with being a counselor, you're tasked with being, uh, a medical professional, I mean, you're tasked with a lot of different things, and so, thank you so very much. Thank you to those folks who stepped it up and who even came back, who even came back, Ms. Garland, came back and worked with us, and so thank you very, very much. With that being said, uh, I'm now going to turn this over to Dr. Woody.
Okay, at this time we will take nominations for board chair for the coming year.
I nominate Mr. Coleman.
Are there any other nominations?
Like, and I'll make Jeff Tatum.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, those nominations are closed. Uh, all in favor of Steve Coleman, uh, I guess, uh, be his way, raise your hand or, aye, either way, just raise your hand, I can count, one, two, three, four. Uh, all those were Jeff Tyson. One, two, three, Steve Coleman will be the chair. Do I have nominations for a rub ice chair?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Tyson.
Uh, do I hear any other nominations? Okay, all for Jeff Tyson, uh, you can raise your hand. Okay? And, uh, Mr. Coleman, you'll close the meeting out?
The meeting's closed.
Thank you, man. Thank you, man. Thank you, man. Thank you, man. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.